And we are beginning to stream, give me one second.
I got the notification, I think we're good.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you very much, and good evening everyone, welcome to the Board of Education Task Force meeting, we appreciate you all being here tonight, this is our second meeting, for those of you who are watching online. And if we, if everyone could mute themselves when you're not talking, just we don't have the feedback, I would appreciate that. Thank you, so as I was saying, this is our second meeting, and we do have a couple members with us this evening, who were not able to join us last week, so before we get started tonight, I am going to ask each of them to take a moment to introduce themselves, since they were not able to do that last week. And we have a guest presenter tonight. Dr. Alvin Thornton is with us, and we want to thank him for being with us, and I will be turning things over to our chair, Dr. Coleman momentarily, and he'll be facilitating tonight and introducing Dr. Thornton. But as I said, before we do that, I just want to do a couple quick housekeeping notes in regards to the schedule. You all should have received in your email, the schedule that we've laid out for the remaining task force meetings. And I believe Ron may be able to share that on the screen, just so our viewers watching online are able to see that, but we will also be putting that document up on the task force webpage. And it will be available, should be, if it's not available there yet this evening, it will be available there tomorrow. Couple quick points to note on that for the group. Since next week is Thanksgiving, we will not have a full task force meeting next week. So we will resume with full task force meetings on Wednesday, December 1st at 6:30 PM. And we will also be making an adjustment for the week leading to Christmas, as we deal with the Christmas and New Year's holidays. The meeting for the week of December 20th, instead of doing it on Wednesday, December 22nd, we would like to do that on Tuesday, December 21st, just to get a little bit earlier into the week, and hopefully, you know, be able to get the majority of the task force together. And as you take, as you take a look at the schedule that we have, you will you'll see the topics, tonight we'll be talking about the history of the board structure, and I see that screen is coming up right now. And then December 1st, we'll be talking about duties, responsibilities, and powers, and you can see where we'll be, December 8th obviously is our public meeting, and December 15th, we'll be talking about terms, compensation, and professional development. We are working on presenters for each of, for the December 1st and December 15th meetings. And the first notice for signup for the public meeting will go out next week, and we will continue to push that out over that two-week period in the lead-up to that meeting, to give as many members of the public as possible an opportunity to speak to the group that evening. And the December 8th meeting, we will likely start that at 6:00 PM, if we're able to do so, if that will work for the group, and we'll talk about that more leading up to that meeting, just to give us a little more time, and not go as late into the evening, if we have several speakers. So as I said, that you all have been emailed this document, and it will be up, if it's not up on the website this evening, it will be up on the website tomorrow morning for full review. So Ron, thank you for sharing your screen, I appreciate that. So I think the other, the other thing I just wanted to touch on briefly, as we cover those larger topics, the what we have tonight, and then on December 1st and December 15th, we also want to break out into smaller subcommittee groups. And I believe you all have received the information about that, we sent that out earlier in the week. After this meeting, and before the end of this week, there are three subcommittee groups, and each, and those will also be on the website, for those who want to view those. Each of the subcommittee groups has a staffer from the county executive's office, and has an identified team lead. So before the end of this week, the staff person from the county executive's office for each subcommittee will be reaching out to the lead for each subcommittee to coordinate scheduling those subcommittee discussions, because those will happen separately from the full task force meetings. So with that, I think I've covered, Erica, I think I've covered all the logistics. Just to thank everybody for bearing with me as we did that, and then before I turn it over to Dr. Coleman, just very quickly, I want to give our new members an opportunity to introduce themselves. And I will start, just as I see them on my screen, with Bishop Gresham.
Well, good evening, my name is Kevin Gresham, and I have the wonderful privilege of pastoring the Greater St. John Cathedral located in Upper Marlboro. Been there for thirty-three years, and I've been a member of this community for just that amount of time, I really appreciative of the opportunity, and hopefully we will get some things accomplished, and so that's it, I think that's it for me.
Very much, and next I'll turn to Ms. Yates.
Hi, I'm so sorry, I'm driving, so I can't. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, um, yes, my name is Nikisha Yates, and I have been educated for the last thirteen years, and I also have a thirteen-year-old who is a product of PG County Public Schools.
Okay. My apologies, I muted myself there, thank you, Ms. Yates, we appreciate you being here tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Coleman, and allow him to facilitate our discussion this evening.
John, we have one more, Ms. Thornton Thompson, Thomas.
Oh, my apologies, Erica, thank you very much, and my apologies for that, for that, Ms. Thornton Thomas, please, take a moment to introduce yourself.
Not a, not a problem, I'm going to look for big favors from this, so that's, that's a good thing, all right. Hello, everyone, my name is Linda Thornton Thomas, I am the president of the Prince George's County NAACP, and I too am proud to be here and happy to be a part of this group. I just wanted to say hello to my former colleague, Regina Jacobs, hope all things are well, and thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much, and with that, now I'll turn things over to Dr. Coleman, to begin facilitating our discussion this evening.
Good evening, thank you, John, I have the distinct pleasure to introduce Dr. Thornton. Dr. Alvin Thornton is a senior advisor for academic affairs to the president of Howard University, the HU. He has served in multiple capacities at Howard University, for example, former interim provost and chief academic officer, senior associate provost, associate dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, and chair of the Political Science Department. In other career spaces, Dr. Thornton chaired the Maryland Commission on Education Finance Equity and Adequacy and Excellence, also known as the Thornton Commission, which reformed the state's Maryland State's secondary education financing and accountability system, leading to the bridge to excellence statue. My lights went out, give me a second. Let's see if this works, there we go. Our Dr. Thornton, and I say our Dr. Thornton is a four-term chair of the Prince George's County Board of Education with so many accomplishments and accolades from facilitating a project to build six schools using public-private partnerships to improving relationships between the Board of Education and the community. We are grateful for Dr. Thornton's advocacy, activism, legendary leadership, institutional knowledge and expertise. We are here for him to spill some oil around the history of the Board of Education structure, we'll spend about twenty, twenty-five minutes or so of Dr. Thornton's presentation and move to Q and A. And that Q and A, just as a friendly and constructive reminder to all of us, myself included, that we'll keep our questions constructive and looking forward. And we're here to learn and hear perspective, Dr. Thornton, thank you.
Thank you, my colleague and Mr. Chairman, for that over the generous introduction. People still have me at Howard University, and I have to say to them, I retired in 2017, but those positions are appropriate when I was there. I was on the faculty there for forty years, and it was a good experience for me. Most importantly, beyond what my colleague and chair of the commission, the task force indicated, you know, I'm the proud father with my wife of two graduates of our public school system, I always start with that. My daughter just graduated from the Central High School, and they were excellently educated by the public schools of Prince George's County, and doing quite well professionally as a lawyer and an engineer. And I have three grandchildren who are in the system now, and so my investment begins with that. Scanning the game, know what our public school system and board can do and have, have done, and that's where I start from. I want to thank the county executive, the leaders of the county council and the John Assembly for conceiving of this concept as a way of engaging the public in this discussion about the way forward. This is a moment that we must take advantage of together as a community to raise an umbrella of consensus over our children. This is, and I think the reason I was asked to make some brief comments was because there's nothing new about what we are confronting, and that is the need to elevate an umbrella of consensus, in the midst of great diversity, political, economic, demographic, linguistic, immigration status, racial, class, etc. So nothing new about what we're going through, and so it's important for old heads like me, right, to kind of share our experiences, to remind people as we reach some decisions about the way forward, there's nothing new about the hurdles that we face, and the hurdles we face, by the way, is not unique to public education. It involves all of the polity that governs us as a people, I mean nationally, at the state level, boards outside of the school board, and so this, this question of creating a political consensus about governing people and providing a public space where everybody can have identity and equality is not unique to public education, but it is something that we want to, that you all are tasked with dealing with. We must get it right, as we have done historically, we must get it right. There is one thing that I always start with, and I would hope that the people of Prince George's County would remember, and that is, public education is the most important and first responsibility of government. Nothing else supersedes it in terms of priority. It extends from our state constitution, our state constitution, I didn't say county charter, I said the state constitution. It extends from our state constitution as the fundamental first priority of governance is public education. So I would ask the task force to make sure that you read Article 8 of the Maryland Constitution as you try to deal with your responsibilities as to how the Board of Education should be organized. Spend some time on that, when I chaired the, I chaired the Board of Education three times throughout the 1990s, and when I left the Board in 1999, chaired the Thornton Commission, the first thing that we had to do was to understand what Article 8 requires of us, not the county we're in, not the county Board of Education of Prince George's, or Saint Mary's, what does that mean, and we need to spend some time with that, what does it mean? It means that public education is the most important responsibility that we have, and that all children as a state obligation must be provided, provided equality in that space. Now, the state does delegate that, as you well know, to boards of education to carry out, right? It doesn't give it, it delegates it for a defined period of time with defined authorized persons to serve, board members and CEOs and superintendents, but the state retains that responsibility. That's why it's so important for your work, I think, to be grounded with the informator of our state legislators, because that is ultimately what is involved here in terms of what you do with the Board of Education. Task forces, you know, we have a history of task forces in Prince George's County, not, not just in terms of the Board of Education, but task forces where we have controversial issues that create an impasse of the type that we now face with our board, where we try to get citizen input of the type that you're going to provide. And I'm just so appreciative of all of you all who are serving, you'll be the eyes and ears of the public broadly representative, listen to the public, get their input, bring it back to your colleagues, right? And have it reflected in your final decision-making, as many other task forces have done. You know, I remember, one of the things that that we in Prince George's County have experienced since 1865, right? Eighteen sixty-five, where obviously we're just coming out of enslavement in Prince George's County, and there was no intention to provide public education particularly to recently freed enslaved people, and then we get a Public Education Act that for the first time, it begins to give some indication that we're going to try to educate these recently freed enslaved people and their children. Now, it takes a hundred years for us to get from that Public Education Act to nineteen seventy-two, where we began to have the current experience that we're involved in, that is a Board of Education in the district called Prince George's County governing public education, a hundred years. I would please read chapter eight of my co-authored book, Dealing with All of This, and John, if you could get that to the members of the council, members of the commission on the task force, that would be very important. Because this history is, is very, one of the things that we do, we are extensions too much of anecdotal journalistic coverage of us, right, personality-based coverage, don't be that as a task force, do your best not to be that. I know I'm being a little bit pejorative in saying that, right, but work hard not to be that, not to be extensions of the latest comment, journalistic comment, news coverage, etc., because your work is too important. You do have a responsibility, and that's why I'm so important, I say it's so important that you've been asked to take a look at legislature, the House, not House bill, but the Journal Assembly Bill 1107, which put in place the current structure that you are being asked to examine, right? That needs to be, I won't offer my opinion about it, but the only opinion I have about it is that it needs to be examined. It needs to be reviewed, it needs to be studied, it needs to be, in terms of whether it's working or not working, etc., and the only people who can do that would be people like you, and you'll offer your opinions to our leadership as to what modification needs to be made. My own personal view, obviously, having been both an elected board member and an appointed board member, having served as a member and a chair, is that obviously there needs to be some modification. It is a very unique structure that is not, is very atypical, so without trying to prejudge your decision-making, my point is is important that you are, will be examining it to, to make sure that it is in the best interest of Prince George's County. When I say that what you all are asked to do is not unique, keep in mind that for a hundred years in Prince George's County, there was no elected board. You know, there was just commissioners appointed from Annapolis that ran public education. There was no opportunity for that to be the kinds of back and forth that you're now seeing among the elected and appointed boards, and there was none of that. You simply had a hierarchy of elites, economic and politically elites, exclusive of black people that ran public education, they were called commissioners, right? And you might have had a commissioner in charge of colored education for black people, Daweswell Brooks, after whom the school was named, and that's essentially what you had. And now, fortunately, our polity evolved, and you began to have the civil rights struggle, and black people, and sympathetic white people began to understand the need for representation in decision-making regarding public education. And we began to get, even though that is a very, don't ever forget it, that is a very volatile, very conflictual, it makes look what we have going on now like child's play, it makes it look mild, right, don't forget that. That we've been through these great struggles that divided us along class and race and region, and different inner part of Prince George's, outer part of Prince George's, and so I'm trying to put, ask you to remember the context in which, in which your responsibility exists. Starting in, we talk about Board of Education, you know, starting in nineteen seventy-two, the federal government, essentially, the courts take over our school system, right? And the board is not a, an independent board that can make decisions independent of itself, is run by a federal judge. Let us not forget that, right, so in terms of the kind of board structure we have, we had an elected board, but it was largely overseen by what, a federal judge? Federal Judge Kaufman, right there in Baltimore City. I came along, that's just the Thomas, during the NAACP experience where the board of the board was there, but the board had to report to, on major issues regarding the school system, a federal judge. Now, that existed from nineteen seventy-two, keep in mind, until when, nineteen ninety-eight. All those years, that structure that I'm describing to you existed, so even though you had a nine-member board, increasingly more representative in terms of race, you know, the great ones after whom we've named schools and buildings, like Bonnie Johns, right? Like Daweswell Brooks, etc., people that you all know, Barbara Martin and others, and Brenda Hughes, and then I, people like me came along in the early nineties, but that was all under the umbrella of federal Jewish prudence, which did not end until nineteen ninety-eight. Now, the current phase that you all are in now, in terms of assessing board structure, really begins when the federal oversight begins to be removed. And you get more representative electoral politics in Prince George's County, and the board becomes much more of a publicly debatable board and institution, and this is mid-nineties that we're talking about, right? Where you begin to have more political representation beginning to manifest itself in school board governance. Certainly by nineteen ninety-four, that begins to happen. And we can have, we all have judgments about the good and bad of that, I'm just reminding you all that that period happened, and by nineteen ninety-nine, we begin to see less patience with independent Board of Education governance, largely because of this, as I remind people, more funds were being pumped into public education. As an extension of the desegregation of our public schools and the federal court pumping, the state pumping in millions and millions of dollars in the late nineties as a part of desegregation, the federal government pumping in money, and when a time you have a lot of money being pumped in, you know, politics, people have more interest, right? People have more interest in terms of that, and so we began to get, and you also had something which is very important, which governs this board dynamics, is you, you begin to have state mandated statutory performance requirements, which affects board governance. It affects what the board is accountable for, it affects what the board is accountable for to the state board. We didn't have that until nineteen ninety-two in Maryland. There was no universal state performance expectations that affected the way boards governed, to whom they were responsible, you didn't have that. When the Maryland School Assessment Program came in in the mid-nineties, you began to have that. And so the board governance structure, it was not just some people getting elected to the board, they had to be responsible too politically and educationally, in terms of performance, to a specific set of measurable metrics called Maryland School Assessment Program, Academic Assessment Program, call it what you want, and that became a very volatile issue because it resulted in the ranking of the board performance. It became twenty-three out of twenty-four, right? The board is failing or is not feeling, and it's not, it's not doing well, or it is doing well. Now, that, that got a lot more interest from Annapolis, as you well know, and then we began to get what? Oversight panels, right, this is the, we got an oversight panel in nineteen ninety-nine. These are people appointed by the county executive with the input of the state legislators who had significant influence, appropriation chairs, ways and means chairs, who had significant influence. Now, obviously, with that kind of dynamics, you're going to get some politics involved, that's just the nature of it, right? So you have an oversight panel which reports to the legislature on the performance of the board, the performance of the school system, independent of the Board of Education itself. It's almost like the Accountability Implementation Board now over the state Board of Education, right, this dynamic that you see. And after that, you have an interim that all-appointed board for a brief time, and then you have a return to the elected board, and then you have the eleven oh seven hybrid board structure that you have. My point to you, though, is that we've been through these additions of board structure. We've been through these phases, and they are extensions of phenomena that are outside of the Board of Education itself. That's why your role is so important in terms of identifying those phenomena, political, economic, social class development, and the rise of the immigrant community, which has to be accommodated, just like the rise of the African-American community in the nineteen seventies, that all has to be reflected, and you do that by studying it as we're talking about, as you all do, and then coming up with the structure that reflects that. See, keep in mind, even the structure itself, without tipping my hat, even the structure itself, about nine members being residentially based in a county this size, right? And when it starts with black people supporting a structure from which they could elect somebody, someone to an elected position, so you would have Inter Beltway district-based board members that Bonnie Johns could be elected to. Well, in two thousand and twenty-one, is that still the concept? You see my point, that's, those are the kind of things you all have to, a system that is ninety-five percent African-American and Latina, right, is that still the concept, that was the concept in nineteen sixty-nine, when the current structure was put in place, it was a representative, it was came on the heels of the Sixty-Four Civil Rights Act, Sixty-Five Voting Rights Act, black people trying to get some footprint, the first and easiest place for school board service, in, in two thousand and twenty-one, is that still the structure? Those are the kind of things that we do, with a county that is this large and this diverse, is one of the second, probably the second largest county in America, where the northern part probably never sees the southern part, is the district-based system the best way to do it? Those are the kinds of issues that you all will interact with the public to deal with. My point, my most important point is that your work is so important because we don't have time to spend too much time on distractions and impasses, because too much has happened, right? Too much is going on, the blueprint, the developments in, in, in public education is taking place at the state level with the blueprint, the funding that is going to take place over the next decade, we must have our act together, to put it simply, we must be together around our children. And we almost, there's no future for Prince George's County without what, a public school system upon which our economics can be based, upon which our commercial footprint can be based, and which our residential footprint can be based. And it must be a first-choice option for all parents, all social classes. Because if it is not, there is no viable future for our county that will be competitive, and this is why your work is so important. So we must have a governing, I'll be quiet after this, and we can engage in some discussions, we must have a governing consensus over something that we value. See, I, I, I don't want to, I do say this, because what I'm seeing is behavior that is not valuing the most important thing at the highest level that it needs to be valued. So we need our children, we need a governing consensus, deeply politicized, that is over something that we value, our children. Okay, and it's been very difficult over the history of our county to arrive at that kind of governing consensus, that's why I gave you that little brief history, and I wanted to read that chapter. Because at each phase of our county's development, each of those phases, starting in eighteen sixty-five, when we started to first talk about educating children, especially like to that we have been less successful in creating that consensus, that governing consensus. The phenomenon that you all are responding to, and we are responding to, is the absence of that governing consensus. And there are many reasons for it, there are many people you can blame, etc., etc., that doesn't do any good. This is a no-fault activity that we're engaged in, solution-oriented, based upon historical information and engagement from the public. I have full confidence that you all will contribute to this, that you all will give a recommendation to the community and our leadership, the county and council and General Assembly, and the people of Prince George's County, and we will arrive at a revised structure, because the current structure does need to be revised. I served in it, it can work, I served in it for two years, productively, I think, with my colleagues, but it is very difficult to sustain the hybrid structure that we have, which I think is inherently problematic in terms of collegial functioning. Mr. Chairman, with that, I want to engage in some questions and comments. Uh, Mr. Chairman, with, with that, I, I wanna engage in some questions and comments from my colleagues, uh, members of the task force.
Dr. Thornton, thank you for that wonderful history. Uh, you were well under twenty minutes, sir, and.
I can keep talking, as you know, sir.
No, it's okay, sir. Thank you so very much. Um, I have a couple of questions myself, but I want to uh open it up to my um, my colleagues.
Dr. Jordan, I can start.
Yes.
Um, thank you so much for, for that history. Um, and I, I also agree with you that um history is important to, to understand where we're going. So, thank you very much. My question to you is, given your, your expertise and wealth of knowledge and, and I love the, the word that Sean used, which was legacy, what has worked? I, I'm interested in knowing what has worked. I know your, your statement was um the hybrid model structure is currently not working. What, what have you seen that has worked, perhaps maybe not in Prince George's County, but at, at other locations that, that we could look into?
See, all, all, this is my, this is, I'm glad you asked that question, Mr. Um, all, uh, all people in cities and counties are constituted differently. Uh, they are demographically, racially, social class, politically, they're suburban, urban, they are political party, they are very different. So uh our community has to create uh structures that serve our interests, right? Uh, now, in, in most cities, in most states, in most counties in Maryland, you have a, an elected board, nine members. You have some modifications in places like Baltimore County, Baltimore City. But generally, that's been the case. You know, Montgomery County, they have nine members, they elected, they let their chair, they let their, they, they let the superintendent, they don't call them CEOs. Uh, we have to come up with the system that is most appropriate for our community, our politics, our dynamics, right? Uh, and that means that that takes some time. Uh, it takes time to reflect. One of the things we don't do, uh, because we, it's, it's hyper-politicized, you know, politicized, is that we don't tie, take time to do what you all are doing, is take time, breathe, reflect, review, right? Depersonalize and say, what do we need? As I said, you know, in nineteen, in the late sixties and seventies, when we first really went from a commissioner form, go, gubernatorially-appointed commissioner form to an elected board, that was coming on the heels of sixty-five voting rights, where black people were and, and, and local control, moving from uh, from the state to local control. And you get uh a school board that is an elected school board, and people are excited about that, you know, especially local people, uh, white and black, who had never elected a school board, the governor appointed them. And everybody's excited, black people can finally get someone elected to something. You know, so we get Jesse Warren, who's the first black elected to the board. So what I'm saying is, uh, uh, each phase of a community's development requires a different formation. This is why you're being asked to say, what do we need going forward, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that what we had is best, right? Because that was for that time. You have to come up with, in terms of compensation, when I was on the board in nineteen ninety-two, I was paid thirteen thousand dollars. When I left as chairman this last time, I was paid nineteen thousand dollars, and Sister Jacob knows for a full-time job. Is that the best system, right? And you know, those just compensation, who do you attract, et cetera. That's your job. Don't be, don't, don't look back and say, this is what we had and it worked. Don't do that. That's an anvil around your, your ankle. Don't do that. Uh, envision something new for what we are now and what we need.
I appreciate that question, uh, Rosa, and Dr. Thornton, of course, your response. Pressing that question just a tiny bit. Um, under the notion of not throwing the baby out with the dirty bathwater, every time I talk, my light wants to go out. Let's see if we can fix that. There we go. So I wonder, you know, you served three terms in nineties, and you gave a, a, a very detailed, at least in eighteen minutes, a detailed history, right? If taking the notion of not throwing out the, the baby with the dirty bathwater, what would you consider moving forward from your experience to now twenty twenty-two approaching?
Let me say this about that. See, I, I, I fought uh in the early days uh for an only, for, for elected boards of education. I'm personally very supportive of having a representation as close to the people, elected representation as possible. That has to be, it, that has to emerge, however, from the body politic. You see what I'm saying? It has to be a consensus that emerges from the people. You can't just say, I want it. It has to emerge. And if it doesn't, then you get what we've, we've had for the past seven years, back and forth, elected versus appointed, this, that, and the other. Is it, you, that is not, that is, that is not in anyone's best interest. It has to be something that says, yes, we all agree, we all agree that this is in the best interest of our community. And that happens by study, by educating, by getting people. Now, if that is, if, if the public says, no, I don't want that, right? We don't need that. We need a different structure. We need an all-appointed board. It, it's, the question is, it, it must emerge, the consensus must emerge from the public. Because if you don't have the public's buy-in from, for either one, you're only gonna have contention. And you have electoral back and forth. Now, the only people who are hurt by that are our babies, our children. Okay? That's what we must avoid. That's what you must speak to us about, saying, we will not let that happen. We will create a, a instruction uh that is based upon the consensus of the public. We will work hard to develop that consensus. You remember, you hear me? Not just because someone says it, we will work hard to develop it. And then we will implement it, and then do what? Review it. That's why I'm so big on reviewing eleven oh seven.
Yes.
You know, you should never have something in place for seven years like this and not review it. That's why your role is so important, right? Review it.
You're brilliant, you're, you're brilliant, skirted my question, sir.
Go ahead.
You talked about, you're talking about process, right? Which is, which I completely agree with you. Um, but uh, and I understand your positionality, less about, you know, what structures or part of structures might work. So I appreciate your, your, your response and, and, and pushing us for process. Thank you. Yeah, my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you very much. Um, and Dr. Thornton, always good to see you, David Harrington.
Yes, sir.
And uh, one of my proudest moments of being at Howard University was um when a, a, a assistant professor at Howard University taught the Urban Studies at the Political Science Department. And as a, I think I was a sophomore or junior at Howard, and this, this dynamic professor came in and taught Urban Studies and never was the same. And so, Dr. Thornton, I, I personally appreciate your leadership and your mentorship.
You're telling, you're telling my age, but go ahead.
I know. And you and uh, certainly, um, Dr. Ron Walters, um, you know, helped shape a lot of students. I, I wanted to sort of um, bring up a point, I think, that you were, you, you were raising, and that is, to what extent does the, by, we, we, we talk about structure, and we talk about looking at eleven oh seven. But if we sort of then look at sort of a, a, another sort of macro view, to what extent does our whole body politic play in this? So what I mean is our, is the notion of term limits, the notion of how we elect people, the notion of slates, the notion of how does all that political demonism play into heavily influencing how people are selected on the board? For example, um, as you know, I was an elected official, um, a state senator, and we had these slates. And certainly, um, you know, the top of the tickets were people who were well-known, you know, and but the, the body politic was very influenced by who was on the slate and how they voted on that person, rather than honestly looking at um, the merits and, and, and what that person brought to our school system. So to what extent should this conversation, if it, if at all, I'm not suggesting that it is, but I'd like to get your insight. To what extent should this conversation look at our broader sort of political and social culture in a way of how it influences the kind of talent that runs for a, and, and that um it becomes members of, of, of the board?
But remember, my initial comment was a governing consensus over something that we value. And when you have something that you, you value, like my children, there's certain behavior that, that you will not engage in. So the, the one thing that we must do, almost ministerially, uh, my pastor, is that we must go back and make sure we're valuing what we're talking about. Because when you value what you're talking about, there's certain things you won't do, there's certain behavior. When you, when you begin to value less, then you begin to engage in hyper-politicization, extreme interpersonal dynamics, extreme electoral politics that infects the government structure. So we go back to re-elevating the, the value that we assign to our babies. That is not a throwaway comment that I'm offering to. You see, uh, as a board member for many years, as chair, there's simply certain things I will not do because of the value. It's just, you, you don't, language, behavior, interactions, et cetera, will not do that. That's the starting point, um, for Harrington, and that is so important. I want to believe that, that's why I started out with Article Eight of the Maryland Constitution. See, I, I think school board service is, is, there's a reason that it is nonpartisan. And it should be, right? Even though I know I'm not naive, I know it gets to be, but it's nonpartisan. I, i- it should not be like other elected positions. It's not designed to be like other elected positions. And anyone who treats it like that, on either side of whatever issue, is not doing this in the best interest of the children. It is, it is supposed to be a trustee orientation. It is a trustee orientation. And those people who serve in the role must view themselves not as politicians, because that's not who they are, that's not, that's not who you are. You're a trustee of a sacred trust, the education of our children. That's a mindset. Now, uh, the question is, when you slate out people, when you engage in hard-nosed electoral politics, uh, that sometimes goes away, okay? It goes away, and, and you get dynamics uh that does not um value our children and does not um, um, view your role as a trustee. Uh, you're not a, a superintendent, uh, you, you, you're not a CEO. You, you know, you're, you're a trustee, you're a broad policymaker, you provide general broad direction. You have no, you're not paid any money, right? You paid eighteen thousand dollars, you have no staff that's personally assigned to you. You have no office. You have seventeen thousand dollars that you can't spend unless someone, uh, seventeen, seven thousand dollars, you can't spend unless someone gives you prior approval. So you, by definition, you are a trustee. That's what you are. Now, what, there are dynamics in our community that has changed that orientation, not just in the current configuration, but it emerged for many different reasons. And we gotta, we have to walk it back. Now, how do you walk it back? This is why, you know, without saying to you, I, I'll offer to you all, when you get down to recommendations, what my own personal view about it is. Uh, but we must almost elevate it to a, a kind of judicial um screening process, right? Where you, where you, at the end of the day, you get people, you get a process, not people, because I don't wanna talk about people, it's not people that I'm talking about, who are trustee-oriented, who understand what that means, and who will protect and insulate children from politics. Okay? That's what you are trying to get. Now, there are many ways you can get there, right? You all, there are many ways that you can get to that end that I'm articulating. Now, why is that so important in Prince George's County at this critical historical moment? You know, as the great challenges facing the children that we serve uniquely, right? We serve a demographic that is unique in terms of size, demographic makeup, economic challenges, recent immigrant status, aspirational black middle classists and the residual white middle classes that remains among us. That's an interesting mix when you try to put it in public education, right? The challenge of non-public education institutions that many parents do not have their kids in. That's what we're facing. Now, you have to have a governing system that takes all of that into consideration. And you have to have people who are serving as trustees of them, who understand that dynamic and who behave and who govern and interact in a way uh that makes sure uh, uh, that those phenomena do not do what it's doing now, and it is artificially separating us, and we must stop it.
Dr. Thornton, we have a question from one of our esteemed members, Ms. McCotter Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Dr. Thornton, of course, structure is really important, and we're probably gonna spend a lot of time talking about it. But there's been so many studies about the effectiveness of boards in terms of outcomes for what you're just talking about, students and their success. So my question to you is, structure, not structure aside, but what other factors? Um, you know, you can have elected, you can have appointed, and you can have hybrid like we've had here. But structure alone is not enough to determine the um effectiveness of, of a school board in our county, specifically with all of the things that are different about us. So what other things would you say um are on top of your list that you think should really be considered when you're talking about going forward?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam's multiple-term Chair, Board of Education. Thank you for your service. And now, thank you for your national leadership that you're providing for the National School Board Association. Um, my dear colleagues, I, I left the Board of Education in December, uh, the first time, December nineteen ninety-nine. And I left the board for the reason that my colleague just asked you about. Uh, because there are, in addition to structure, uh, there are uh socioeconomic, dynamic, regional, spatial, community formations that affect the success of school systems. I understood that if there was not a state uh solution uh, 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 that created uh capacity to serve children, provide for them financially, resource school systems, that it was a state uh enabling of that, that this wasn't gonna work, that you were all gonna, you were always gonna have frustrated educational expectations of particular municipalities, in this case called Prince George's County. That's what you had in nineteen ninety-nine, right? Was one of the reasons why you had expectations coming from the people of Prince George's County that was not uh, you didn't have, you didn't have the capacity base, you didn't have the tax base, you didn't have the income base because of the demographic diversification, et cetera. And so I left the board to go to the state to chair the Bridge to Excellence Board Commission, which was about what? Providing adequacy and equitable funding so that the boards would not have to annually cut their budgets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's what the blueprint is all about. That's why I'm so uh, pleading with us to get our affairs together, create consensus, and let's move into the blueprint environment, which addresses, Sister Jacobs, what you're asking about, right? Because the blueprint says, there has to be, going back to Article Eight, right? Because the Constitution doesn't talk about Prince George's, even though we like to call ourselves, you know, Prince George's. They don't talk about Prince George's in Montgomery, you know, the other thing, Baltimore County. It talks about what? It, it talks about education of the children in Maryland. The blueprint says all children will, will be provided equitable, adequate resources with universal accountability for high expectations that are resourced. That's what it says. And if we create particularities that are unique to us, that disenable us to function in that environment, you hear what I'm saying to you? That we're distracted by governance issues. We can't function in the blueprint environment. We won't be competitive. That's why it's urgent for you to do your work. It's urgent for our county leadership and state leadership and et cetera, so that's, and board members to get this right so we can move into a movement environment. Because that's, that's where you're going. That's exactly where you're going. Uh, and that's where we need to be.
Colleagues, any additional questions right now? I have a ton, so don't feel bad, or at least a couple. But I, I really would like to hear your voices and your questions if you have them.
Mr. Chairman, um I want to go back to, uh if I may, something that Dr. Thornton said that was fascinating when and I really want to also appreciate Gina McCarter Jacobs, haven't seen her in a long time, and it's good to see her in the leadership. Uh I thought that was an interesting question as well. How do we sort of begin to get, increase the public value of education being the sole driver? Because I think there's a lot of confusion around who is responsible for education, right? So so when we were in the throes of 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 some of the some of the debate that we had earlier, we said, well, that's the state's problem, right? Um, the state is responsible for public education. And then some would say, no, it's it's the county, no, it's this, no, it's that. Um, how do we, how do we sort of, you know, increase the sort of value proposition and testing for those who want to even aspire to be on the Board of Education and make that the central value in terms of everything that we do in Prince George County? Well, you know, uh the, just like any politics, politics uh is education and politics of these are cultural phenomenon. There's no substitute for what I'm saying, these are cultural phenomenon. And they emerge from homeowners association, cultural communities, right? Uh aggregations of people spiritually, that's where it comes from. And when you begin to see the kind of dynamics that we are experiencing, you begin to see a dislocation at that level. This is very important, what I'm saying to you, right? This is what, sometimes you see this and you say, oh yeah, no, that is a symptom of something deeper. Community dislocation. Civic associations not as strong, right? PTA is not as strong. Civic and inter-nominational spiritual communities that guide and inspire are not as strong. And then it manifests itself politically, and it doesn't come out too pretty when it reaches political manifestation, right? Because that's when hard, that's when hard politics speaks, and that's not pretty at all. Uh this is why I say it's a cultural phenomenon, so we must make sure that at that level, uh starting out with the universal valuing of children, making sure that we we make sure that we organize ourselves, the social space in which children exist, so all of them can have universal identity and have what they need. And we organize our lives, our civic associations, our communities, our churches and religious organizations, our politics in a way like that. See, I'm, just like nationally, right? There's a weakening at that level, you all know it. I mean, there's a weakening at that level. And sometimes it manifests itself in politics and in board members and board governance and who serves on boards and those kind of things, I don't go there, but that's that's what it does. And we must strengthening our foundation at that base. One of the things hopefully you'll say in your recommendations, you'll address that. You will address that. You know, I represented District Seven in the in the nineteen nineties, right? And if I look at the dynamics and structure and organization of that community before you get to school board issues, you have to look at what, what's what's happening in the community, right? That's, those are, those are things that are very, very important. So David, um I I'm asking, you know, that, let's make sure that we look at those institutional formations that I think are weakening, being weakened. This is a national phenomenon. This is not just Prince George County, it's it's in every community, right? That will find manifestation in school boards. We we do have to make it something that people want to want to do, that service, right? We have to make it something that people want to do. You know, I I don't know, not very, some people will not do this, right? They will not serve, it's just something that they don't, they're not willing to do, it's a difficult job, right? It's probably the most public visible job in the county and in the state is serving the school boards, isn't it Jacob, Jacobson, I know. It's a very difficult, demanding job, you have a very serious public accountability, you have all kinds of levels of accountability from the county, from the council to the state legislature, to the senate, to the federal, it's just a very demanding job. And we have to make it something that is that people will want to do, right? We have to, that's why you all are being asked to look at it, because not everybody will will serve. Not everyone will serve as chair, as Miss Jacob knows and I know, and everybody knows, nobody, not everybody will serve as a boardman. So we must make it a much more attractive public responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Uh Ms. Thornton Thomas, please, your question.
Um, yes, I um would like to ask two questions, uh or maybe one and a half, if you will. Uh Dr. Thornton, um being a former school board member, I understand the issues that people have. I certainly appreciate uh the fact that we have to build consensus. And I think we had a kind of a pretty good board. Um, we certainly um we're very pleasant to each other when we were in front of everybody. Um, so I think we did a really good job like that because, you know, of course, there's a symbolic role that we have. We have to look at our behavior to make sure that we're doing a good job for our community and at least letting them know that we're working together. But I wanted to ask you a little bit about your techniques um in reaching consensus on the last couple of years. But also, do you agree that a powerful school board goes beyond the classroom and partners with the community? Um, so if you could just share thoughts on that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, um, the um every political body has to identify very important things that it seeks to achieve from which it can get consensus. Now, that is, if you don't, if you don't do that, then you go down to the um the most minimal things. And those, that's where you get division, right? So if you look at uh whether it is the blueprint, which created great unity, right, among and across the board, the board, whether it's the P three, building of schools for our children, whether it's the selection of, not the selection, but the appointment of the, I think, very impressive chief executive officer, who I choose to call superintendent, uh whether it's the selection of the chiefs of the system, whether it is the agreement that you would have um the the presence of the board as a professional um body that is does not engage in dissidence and discord. Um, whether you would, so you you create big public priority issues from which you can get unity. And in that context, you can kind of deal with things that may divide you, right? But if you start with those things that divide you, there is no end to that stuff. So we always have to have big things. That's why I'm saying, talking about the blueprint, you have to have big things. Because we know, we are a huge, very diverse, from law to academic, right? We're very diverse. You can always find chaos and discord and division and all of that, right? Uh, in in my day, you had uh young African-American parents like me uh who were first coming into the county with our children. And then you had the residue of white parents who were resisting our civil rights demands. Uh, and if we had, we 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 fought, we fought, for those who've been around, right? Uh but we had to create something that was bigger, and that bigger was ending desegregation and forced busing, building schools, creating a restorative education concept for the kids, moving on to Bridge to Excellence that began to unify us across race and region. Now, this is what we need to discover now, you see my point? What is it, Sister Thomas, that unites, what is it, right? I have my idea of what it is that can unite. Uh, then people will ask you all, what is it that will cause people to be united? And for two years, we had essential unity across elected and appointed and north and south, we had, you know, it was essentially a, just a great experience. I think we ought to, you all ought to look to that and see what would happen, right? Uh, and see if we can replicate it in the interest of our children. That was another question, Sister Thomas, that
Yeah, Ms. Thornton Thomas, did you have another question?
Yeah, well, it was just basically about the community and uh having partnerships and uh how to connect uh the school board and our community so to make sure that they feel welcome coming into the schools. And it also, um, you know, as an advocate, I think the school board is just that, a person who goes out and encourages our parents to become a part of whatever programs we have and then to have conversation with them on a regular basis. So just your thoughts on, you know, some kind of community engagement, you know?
Yeah, that that, you see, in in order for the community to be engaged, see, I'm I'm, the community itself has to be organized. And it has to be, cannot be individual voices and comments in the social media. See, that's a very destructive kind of thing. The community has to be organized, right? Now, we've we've seen a diminution of community organizing, and it's replaced with individual commentary. Uh, and I'm a free speech person, but see, that's not a substitute for organized communities that are extensions, uh where schools are extensions of communities, right? When I came along, schools were extensions of communities, right? Schools were connected to civic associations. They're strong, and they were, you didn't have just one or two people who would come and just uh uh have to have to, I'm not criticizing at all, because the people have to do what they have to do. People have to come to the board and they yell and shout and they post things, etc. That's no substitute for strong civic associations, PTAs that are community-based, that are connected to the school, right? And it is in that way that they interact with public education governance, that's not what we have now. As a board, as a board of education member, I think there should be no attempt to substitute board uh membership for superintendent governance. And um there should be no, anytime you have that particular item with fourteen members, which is too many board members, by the way, too many board members, by the way, just too many. Uh, you have uh you have problems, that's not sustainable. Uh, board members, as I say, are trustees. Uh, they are to make policy and to hold accountable. That's their primary role. That's why they only pay eighteen thousand dollars a year and given no office and no staff. Their job is to make policy, hold accountable, and make administrative and personnel decision changes if performance is not expected. Once there is any confusion about that, you got a problem. Particularly in a complex system like ours, it's not, as I tell my friends in Somerset County and some of these little small counties, right? That we are compared to. You can't use the kind of your governance structure as any example for what is, has to be done in a place like Prince George. Is there's no parallel, shouldn't even be a comparison, right? And where you can run around and spend all your time and etc. Uh, you you know, you got a hundred and thirty thousand plus kids, a hundred and twenty eight schools, you know, twenty-two thousand employees, fourteen board members. You you gotta have uh board members making policy, holding accountable, and reporting the accountability to the public as a collective body. You understand that scenario? See, holding up, making the policy, holding accountable those hired to implement the policy, and regular reporting out to the public as to performance, and then making adjustments where there is inadequate performance. Now, we've gotten away from that for many different reasons, and it's not just this board, it's a phenomenon that evolved. But we must get back to that, because that's the structure that the state put in place, that's what the education article says, that's the way it's designed. And anytime you do it differently, you're going to have problems.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, we have two questions in the queue, Dr. Christie and then Ms. Green.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, Dr. Thornton, for being here, it's so great to see you. Uh, as as president of PGCA, you know, I chair a fully elected board, so uh, you know, discourse and disco, you know, and disagreements are part of the game, you know, it's just for our school board that happens to happen publicly, right? And so that's where I think sometimes the public perceives discord as ineffectiveness, but through a healthy debate, through, you know, really examining a question and idea, that's how an idea improves, by recognizing that there are concerns, now we can find solutions to those concerns and make an idea better. So for me, my question to you is, in your experience, what were the elements specifically of the current HB eleven oh seven that caused our school board in its current structure to be characterized as ineffective? What were the specific pain points that we would want to avoid moving forward?
Well, the first thing you have to do is do what I see happening here. Whatever modification you make, which I don't think was sufficiently done when eleven oh seven was put in place, you have to get um structured community input over an extended period of time, that is critical. So it's not so much what you do, it's how you do, and the extent to which public has uh an opportunity to have input. This is why your work is critical, right? Um, that's the, that was, that's the major fault line um that I that I see from eleven oh seven. Um, also, I I don't think, I'm an old political scientist, as Brother Harrington pointed out, right? And I've been around big organizations for many years and and served, you know, as a a major officer in a major organization. Um, you know, you, any time you have a system whereby there is such bifurcation of the way the system is constituted, you're going to have problems. Anytime you have a system where a leadership comes from one place and majority membership comes from another place, that's difficult to sustain. You gotta choose which one you're going to do, right? It's just problematic. You can do your very best to try to make it work as we as we do, but it's 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 just, it's it's tension. Uh, people get inertia coming from one source, and then there's an inertia that comes from another, and then they are put in the same place. Now, people have to work hard, as we did for two years, to try to make it work, right? But it, that inertia is there, the pull is there. And anytime politics kicks into that environment, you get a problem. So uh I I think the hybrid system, which introduced that to me um was 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 problematic, just because of that, right? It's it's problematic. And hopefully, we can walk back from that, whatever you all recommend and and address uh uh that. Um, the other part of it, obviously, is that you still have uh three levels of accountability that this hybrid body has to be accountable to. Still has to be accountable to the state legislature, the senators, the delegates, the council, the county executive, and the people, right? And so when you got these different sourcing of their composition, but they all have these different accountability outlets, you get a problem. See, it's not a personality issue, it's just the structures of why you all are examining it. And I think there are things that, I think more thought should have gone into uh the um the structure that was put in place, because I think it was not given sufficient thought when it was put in place. Um, and as you all are modifying, recommending to our leadership a modification, hopefully you benefit from um what I thought was an insufficiently considered concept.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I'm Ms. Green, you have a question?
Yes, I do, um, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you, um, Dr. Thornton, for being here this evening, it is greatly appreciated. Um, my question I have is, what do you believe we should have in requirements in qualifications for future school board members? Um, a lot of the appointed members, they have more of a um rubric for things that they have to have. Why can't we have something that we put together for future school board members to have? So we can make sure that they can work together successfully for the good of the school district and communities?
You know, that that is an interesting question, my dear sister, because um, and you know, as I said, you you, it's almost like judges, right? Uh, medical boards, you have to decide what you want your board to be. Is it a judicial-type body? Is it is, it has quasi-judicial responsibilities, right? It allocates rights and benefits and denies and benefits, it adjudicates, right? I serve as a judge, etc. Is it where you have criteria that people have to satisfy? That's one approach, right? That's not how we have done boards of education. We don't do county council that way, we don't do delegate that way, we don't, etc. But you have to decide, is that what you want, right? Which is fine, if you decide to do that, where you have criteria that people have to satisfy, go through a screening committee. For example, when when the Accountability Implementation Board, which is the board that will govern the blueprint funding and implementation, there was a screening committee, right? People had to apply, they had to go through that to be on that, that's the highest now, I think it's the highest state board involving education, that that's one approach, it may That, that's one approach. It may not be appropriate for a community where that expects, right, to be able to elect their people with being a delegate or a county member, the county council, et cetera. That's, that's, that's the debate that you all will have to have. My point is, we, you assess what's, you know, what the people want. You know, people say, no, I want to elect my people. That's one of the things that people, they only elect my people, right? Then there's one scenario where the Accountability Implementation Board was not elected and it's the highest level, right? The State Board of Education is not elected. So that you all give the people your best thinking. You see my point? Give it, give it your best thinking. I'm, I'm just giving you two sides of it, right? In the case of judges, we do what? We both appoint and elect, right? You see my point? We both appoint and elect. So it's a very complex thing. It's not just because somebody says, I want an all appointed or I want it all elected. No, it's not that simple. It is line up the pros and cons. What is in the best interest of this community? What does the community want? And then most importantly, this is the key. Most importantly, once the decision is made, anyone, the elected officials above the board must do what? Commit themselves to whatever is decided. That, that's the key. That is the key. Because once you decide to go in one direction, right? Then you, you follow it through. And then you review after a certain period of time to see if it worked. And if it doesn't work, you change. Nothing wrong with that. Like you all are going to do now. You're going to review eleven oh seven. You all are going to recommend to our leadership, is it working? And you all are going to recommend some changes, which is fine.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do you have any more questions? Do any of my other colleagues have questions? And a good teacher gives wait time.
Oh, I, I wanted to say to Dr. Christie, is that right? Congratulations on your, on your new role. And I was not, I, I heard, I think the inference in your comment to me was that see, I, I have no, gosh, you should have known me in the, in the nineties when I was chairman of the board. I had no hesitancy about public comment and disagreements and all that, you know? So I'm, I'm one of the creators of that, at least, you know? But when it reaches a point where it gets in the way of achieving what I consider to be fundamental things that are of interest to the school system and the children, then I, that's where I draw the line. That's why I draw the line. That's what I was trying to say in my op ed, which I hope all of you have seen, where it begins to get in the way. And when I say get in the way, see, I'm very selfish about the blueprint. Everything for me starts with the blueprint. And anything that cripples us in being effective in that environment, I have no patience with. Anything that cripples us from getting resources, the people you represent, right? Anything that cripples us and allows us to be stereotyped and caricatured and extensions of media journalism and all that, I have no patience with it. And that's, that's where I'm coming from. That's where the, the dissidence and discord is unacceptable. It's particularly when it's, when it's affordable, as we saw between the past two years, the two thousand, it's affordable. Doesn't have to be. It does not have to be. You see my point?
Dr. Thornton, I'm going to, if my colleagues don't have any more questions, I'm going to risk one last question, making sure that we stay within time. But I want to defer to my colleagues first. Usually eight second wait time is pretty good. So, that said, what would you say has been, is, is most effective in your experience working with the CEO?
Respect for roles. That's the most important thing, is respect for roles. As long as there's respect for roles that are statutorily defined in the education code as well as in anyone who would be a board member and who understands how professional organizations should work, that's the most important thing. Everything starts with respect. We all have roles.
Yes.
Especially if you're the chair and board members, we all have roles and they are different. Board members are not paid to be CEOs and CEOs are not paid. I don't like that. That's the first thing you all ought to recommend is changing that. Board members are not paid to be superintendents and superintendents are not paid to be board members. And they have very different roles. And as long as they respect each other's roles and never confuse that in the public's mind, right? And as much as possible, maintaining representation and responsibilities as much as possible. See, I, I think one of the big problems that Prince George's has had, certainly since nineteen ninety nine, is we've had, we've had fluidity in the superintendency and, and impermanence, I shouldn't say impermanency, but just short-term tenures. And that exacerbates board dynamics when you have that, right? So anytime you can, the most important thing that a board can do is to stand up the superintendency, make it strong and accountable and support it. See, that's the thing. That, that just helps everything. Helps with the politics, helps with public engagement, it helps with everything. Doesn't mean that you give anybody a pass, but you do that. And just say this, you know, be careful when I say this, that any activity that undermines that is highly problematic and should be immediately addressed. And I won't go further than that, but I think you know what I'm saying.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I'll go one last call for questions with, for my colleagues. Going once, going twice, sold. We're finishing a meeting. Dr. Thornton, you have been incredible. Thank you for coming. You've been not only inspiring, but gave us insight into structure. And although we wanted to pick your brain around, what would you do? I appreciate you making sure that you, you know, you steer clear around, about making, you know, explicit recommendations. But you did give us some think about around process and some structure, if not, if nothing else implied. So really, I really appreciate your time to do that and juxtapose all that in a context of history in Prince George's County and in Maryland, for that matter. So thank you.
I, I really appreciate you all inviting me and I did my best to stay away from some things that would be inappropriately to talk about and not that I don't have opinions about them, but it's probably not useful to, to the work that you have.
Yes. So a huge thank you on behalf of the, the task force and committee. Thank you so much. Mr. Erzen, I'm going to turn it over to you for closure.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And, you know, I want to echo what Dr. Coleman said about Dr. Thornton. Thank you very much for being here tonight, you know, as always, very insightful. And I think it led to a, a very good discussion. And certainly want to thank the members of the task force for your time this evening. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, just a reminder, you know, that we won't have a full task force meeting next week due to Thanksgiving. However, the, the subcommittee information that, that you all received this week, the leads on those subcommittees can expect to hear from the staff person assigned from the county executive's office to begin coordinating some of that subcommittee work. And in those subcommittees, you know, you'll be looking at the same, there'll be a subcommittee looking at the issues we, we touched on tonight and the issues that the, the larger task force will have an opportunity to, to touch on on December first and December fifteenth. We thought it would be good to have some small group discussion that would allow, you know, for those discussions to, to, you know, be more impactful as additional information is brought into them. So with that, I think we are good logistically. Certainly, I want to ask Erica if there's anything that I'm missing.
No, I think we're good, John. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, thank you very much, everyone. Be on the lookout for that information. And we'll certainly be in contact over the next two weeks and we look forward to having the full task force back together on December first. And we'll be sending more information about that as we get closer. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.